Meetings called to order at seven oh five. We have all of our selectmen are here. And Chris Avikoff as well. Here from the public and running for public comments. All right, um, for selectmen's briefing. We have a lot to cover in our agenda today, and most of it is part of what I would have talked to, talked about in the briefing. I will mention this Congressman Courtney will be coming here on Wednesday to do a walkthrough of the senior, the Housing Authority Building, Senior Housing, because he would like to see what the changes are going to be based upon the $2 million that we got for updating it, renovating it. And I've talked with Jessica, and she's making arrangements to have a, a unit open for them to go through. He anticipates bringing or having someone from HUD Connecticut Field Office and the Connecticut Housing Department coming as well. So that's going to be happening Wednesday at, from ten thirty to eleven fifteen. It's a forty-five minute walkthrough. It's a walk and talk.
Okay.
It's just coming Wednesday.
Sorry?
This coming Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday. All right, so I'd like to move along. I don't think I have anything else. We have a number of other things to go through. Acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March seventeenth. And then special meetings of, and there's an error on the agenda, the January twenty-eighth meeting should be crossed out. The other ones, March twelfth, March eighteenth, and special meeting of April ninth are all correct. So you all have copies of the minutes of the regular meeting of March seventeenth. And it was just before that meeting, actually, a couple of weeks before that meeting, that I noticed that the minutes of our January twenty-eighth meeting were incorrect. And during our March seventeenth meeting, we discussed that. And an amended set of minutes is attached as appendix attachment A to the regular meeting minutes of March seventeen. So if you take a quick look, I've kind of highlighted what's there.
Yeah, I will move to accept the minutes for the seventeenth of March.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
The corrections referring to the
Yeah.
Minutes of January twenty-eighth.
Very good.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. My notes too. All right, and then we have the minutes of the meeting of the special meeting of March twelfth. You'll see them there in your packet.
Your turn. Yeah, I'll move to accept minutes.
Second.
I will second him.
Thank you. Um, any adjustments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Then we have the next set of minutes, which are the March eighteenth minutes. Special meeting. Thank you, Roger.
Second.
Any adjustments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then the special meeting of April ninth. And Roger, which one of you? Bill, you were not at that meeting. So this is one where, um, I believe, if you take a quick look at those minutes. And, um, so could I have a motion from someone to? Why? Thank you, Roger. And I will second that one. And all in favor?
Yeah, just a comment on something I had checked a while back.
Yeah.
We can double check it. I, I don't have any problem with the miniature. I understand that according to FOI, on a small board like ours, even the Board of Finance.
Yes.
If a member is not at the meeting but reads the meeting and agrees with the minutes, they can vote on the minutes.
Interesting.
Yeah, I don't remember what the circumstance was. We had some issue come up.
That's interesting, because when you think about it, the minutes are supposed to, the, the way, the reason we're voting on the minutes is to say that is accurate as to what happened in the meeting. And if you're not in the meeting, I can't see how you could approve the minutes.
It was, I, I believe it was an issue regarding one of our other boards. I, I don't remember if it was zoning board of appeals or which board it was. And they actually had a, a member who had left the board.
Yeah.
Who comprised the majority that originally approved the minutes and did the minutes. So they went for months without being able to approve any minutes. And I got that clarified. But I just, just as a point of, or a point of interest.
Yeah, well, I think the other part of this is, if the meeting was conducted via Zoom, and it's obvious, you know, it's, it's a videotaped meeting, then I would think that a member who was not there could
Watch the
approve the minutes, because they watched the video.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, not
Thank you.
I, I found it curious when I found that out.
Yeah.
It seemed particularly because there are a number of boards that only have three or five members.
Right.
If you do that, and I say, if you weren't there, and I say, though Florey was excused. The minutes, once they're filed with the town clerk.
Yeah.
Are the official minutes. So the minutes would have to be corrected at the next meeting. You would have to correct each set of minutes when you did the, if you, the FOI thing is right.
You could follow up with that for later.
If that makes sense, what I just said.
Kinda.
How about this? If we get time, we'll follow up. We, we actually, believe it or not, we're going pal mel a lot. We've been doing this over the last three months.
Yeah.
And it's been a sprint.
Yeah.
And, um, and actually, you know, some of our minutes have been late because it's been a sprint.
Yeah.
So, uh, thank you for your patience. Okay, here from boards, commissions, committees. Oh, yeah, boards, commissions, committees. Do we have anything? No. Not that I'm aware of. Uh, let's see. Old Business Ashford School Roof Replacement Project Status. We have a couple of things going on.
Boards and committees, I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Is our land use office open on Wednesdays, Wednesday nights?
Till six.
Okay, with all our other. Was it just last, last Wednesday that Bonnie wasn't in or was closed?
Uh, was she taken the day then?
She took Wednesday off.
Okay, so it was a
That's unusual.
It wasn't, okay. All right, because I, I got a call that from a resident. And he had had an appointment with the building inspector for Wednesday that never showed or never called him.
That's a different issue.
And he, I guess, contacted the land use office on Friday to find out what happened, because he arranged his whole day for the inspection.
And of course, it was closed on Friday for Good Friday.
And then he, then what he heard was that they were closed on Wednesday and Friday. So anyway.
So what may not have had, there are a couple of things. First of all, if he had an appointment, that appointment should have been honored. Whether, whether she was there or not, it's not the appointment with her. It's an appointment with the building official.
Right.
And so thank you for letting me know. And if you could later on, tell me who it was so that I can follow up with the building official.
Okay. Um, the inspection has been rescheduled for tomorrow. So I did tell that person that if there was any issue, to contact either this office or me. And we'd follow up on it.
Yep.
How?
Just because the land use clerk is not there, um, is not enough to not have the appointment.
Doesn't mean inspections doesn't happen.
Correct.
If, if our, uh, office manager isn't in.
Correct. Um, okay. And thank you for letting me know. Uh, Old Business Ashford School Roof Replacement Project Status. We have a couple of things going on. One, the Skylight, replacement Skylight, if I understand correctly, was put in over the weekend. Uh, I will double, or actually, yes, over the weekend, I will double check to make sure that actually happened. That was scheduled for then. And we've had some difficulties with, um, our, um, the architecture firm we're working with. And to the point where they challenged, uh, change order one, remember change order one?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know you do. Um, challenged it and accused the, uh, there's some strife between the uh, architect, architect and the, um,
Contractor.
Contractor. Because the contractor
Who challenged it? The old?
The architect did. And what he did was he withheld payments number eight and nine, which had nothing to do with way back change order one. And he said that for change order one, that what was provided for backup information from the, uh, uh, contractor was not adequate. It was incorrect. And he alluded to some, uh, negative dealings, okay, on the part of the
The architect alluded?
About the contractor. So I've been going back and forth with the architect to say, hey, wait a minute. You are, you are literally breaking our contract. You know, we have a, as part of, he's supposed to be doing these reviews in a timely fashion, and he's supposed to, he already approved change order number one. What, six months ago? So to come back now, they're, they're having issues in their other projects that they have to work together on. The tension between them appears to be quite great. So, um, we're working through that little awkward. And, uh, I'm not happy just with the conduct.
Well, I think you know how I feel about that.
Oh, yes. Well, I don't feel differently. It's just, you know, we were kind of in a bad position.
I mean, my, my concern is, and I'm assuming it's because we haven't got it yet, I still haven't seen any warranty documentation on the roof.
What?
Nor have I seen the owner's manual, manual, which would show the warranties and lien releases.
Right, they don't call it a warner, an owner's manual, because there's not that kind of maintenance, it's a kind of an ongoing thing.
With the state, we call it an owner's manual. We had several different, but
Understood.
What it is, it's a manual. It shows all the different products and the vendors that, that put in those and what the warranties of those products are.
Exactly.
And then it also with that shows if there's recommended maintenance for any of those items, what that maintenance schedule is.
Yeah.
And then I know the state always looked at the most important were lien releases, which cleared the air if there were any problems between architects and vendors or owners and vendors or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And last we had talked, we haven't seen any of that.
No, because the roof wasn't finished. Okay, so the roof should be at this point in time pretty much finished. I'm going to do a follow-up, uh, within the next couple of days to go, okay, what else is left? Because I heard the ladders are there that were supposed to be provided. The Skylight should have been installed. Uh, they had good weather to do it.
I think it's a good idea. They waited till we got through the better part of winter before they did.
Yeah, I do too. I do too. But this, but this, uh, conflict between the two parties is incredibly time-consuming and really frustrating.
Well, it concerns me that we're, if he's, if the architect's having a problem on a, on another job with the same vendor, we're in the middle of this and suffering the consequences of that, which is not professional.
Right, and that's basically what I'm alluding to. Uh, the other thing too is you cannot hold up payments for other work. Not unrelated to the thing you have a problem with. And he was doing that. And even the last one is payments eight and nine. So I kind of pushed, I talked with town council, pushed, and, uh, he approved payment number eight. But then he did a kind of a conditional improvement on payment number nine, saying he was protesting because, because of not having backup for something else. So anyway, I'm letting you know that that's going on. I'm not going to get into more details in a public forum in case we have, you know, litigation. So, so, and, and what part of our aim here is we need to have all of the information you're talking about, because we're putting solar on that roof this summer.
Without the warranties and everything, so if I, my suggestion is you don't put anything on it.
The contract says that warranties and liens are turned over once a certificate of
Occupancy.
No.
Completion, substantial completion. Same thing.
Understood.
That's normally issued by our building department.
It's going to be issued by two things, I think. Our building department and Garland.
Garland is our
They put a Garland roof on there. And Garland has been inspecting as they were building.
Typically with the state, before we would approve any reimbursements or whatever.
Yeah.
We needed a CO issued by the municipality of the construction.
Actually, what we found is that may have been how it was before, but we got reimbursements earlier. They just wanted us to submit. And they wanted us to do it.
I'm surprised if, if an audit happens, that may come back and bite everybody.
Well, hopefully not. So, but anyway, um, so, uh, anyway, I'm just letting you know this is going on. Uh, solar project status. Okay, you have in your packets, you have some information. Um, we have been working with MHR, which is a company that we contracted with originally. Bill, you should be familiar with them.
I am.
That's with Mark.
Mark Robinson.
And, um, they have been trying to accelerate our schedule as best we can to make sure we can get the solar on that roof in the summer while it's unoccupied. And so what you'll see is we're, uh, in the process of going ahead with issuing the RFP that was drafted by MHR and is currently being reviewed by town council and by KERMA. Okay? We're going through the right steps. And, uh, so the RFP is there, the draft RFP that was sent to town council. Uh, and, uh, they will, uh, they also, as part of the, um, uh, MHR, we have them acting as an owner's rep because they're most familiar with our roof. They've been working with us since day one on it. And, um, what they're doing is putting together, not only, they, they're doing the RFP, but they're also doing the contract for the PPA, which will be reviewed by our town council, who sounded pretty happy about getting that to work with and instead of having to start from scratch. And, uh, they're, uh, also MHR has requested, uh, they want to make sure the detail electrical design is done as part of what they're providing for the walkthrough so that the, uh, PPA bidders will have that information and understand what they're really working with, instead of us kind of, you know, hiring someone or a firm to, uh, a PPA group to go in and do their own assessment of it. We want to make sure that they're working with the detailed information we're providing them. So they have asked for a, MHR has asked for us to, uh, sign a contract with another firm that was, uh, is going to do the detailed design, if you will. And that firm is only charging $4,000 and change for the work. I'd also like to point out that the money to pay for the, uh, MHR and the money, uh, to pay, again, to pay for the MHR and for this subcontracting firm, if you will, is not coming from our coffers. It's coming from the Board of Ed's online, uh, non-lapsing fund. They have offered and approved paying twenty-five, up to $25,000 for whatever work MHR is doing and whatever MHR needs to get, uh, this out there. MHR will also be working with us throughout the project to make sure that it's kind of as our owner's rep, to make sure it's being done the way it's supposed to be done. I'll also expect that, uh, Garland at some point will be looking at it. You know, one of the rules about putting solar on the roof is if you're going to perforate that roof anywhere or disturb it in in any way, then the original contractor that put the roof up or someone that is uh, uh, approved by Garland, if you will, uh, can go and make any changes on the roof.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Okay. So, let me think for a second.
Go back to Garland part about approving changes on our roof?
Yes, first of all, Garland's the one who has the guarantee on the roof.
Warranty.
Warranty. And, and they
On the material.
Material and, yes, material and how it's constructed, but it's a, a good roof, if you will. Uh, in addition to our, certainly our architect.
Did we get a copy of their warranty?
Oh, whose warranty? Garland's. Garland's warranty will be part of the overall warranty for the roof. It's a, and it's a twenty-five year roof or is it thirty, Chris? I can't remember.
I'm sorry?
Is it a twenty-five year roof or a thirty year roof?
I want to say thirty, but I think it was twenty-five.
Okay. We'll, we'll have to go back. There's a lot of details we've been going through, especially going through things with the uh, strife between these companies. The, um, so if anybody's going to perforate that roof, it has to be the original contractor or someone that, the war, that we have the warranty with, Garland, for example, would approve. So we're assuming it would be the same company that we had put the roof up at this point in time. However, if it changes, I just know that the fallback is whatever Garland would approve. So, um, why was I telling you that? Just so that you understand that that's one of the rules we have to abide by.
Yeah.
And then what will happen is Garland will then, then in a sense, re-warranty the roof to say, uh, or at least hold, say the warranty still holds, once the solar is up there. We can't do it without having them involved.
My concern is?
Yeah.
I, I know I haven't seen it. I don't know if you've seen it. It sounds like we haven't seen a warranty either from the contractor that we used or from Garland.
They're not done.
Excuse me?
They're not done. We did have
Warranty of the product that they're producing for you before they're done.
Multiple products? You're telling me that we need warranties on all the products? And the maintenance schedule and everything.
The roof in general, you have a general warranty from the contractor.
It's not
And you also have
I know that, but not until it's done.
Some people, a lot of people get a warranty even before the construction starts.
We have something in our RFT, RFP regarding aspects of warranty, don't we?
Aspects.
Yeah.
Garland is contractor for Imperial, right?
Yes.
So.
We'll pull
That's where the warranty would go.
Yes.
Until the substantial completion and it's turned over to us, right?
Yes. And they have been monitoring the project as it's gone along.
Typically, on a big job, where you hire a contractor who is stipulating what they're going to put in for a roof, how they're going to do it, when they're going to do it, timeline, everything. You get a copy of their draft warranty on a change order like you're talking with Garland for a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
It was a hundred and forty-four thousand.
You get a copy of their warranty on their product. And you have council look at both of those.
Council looked at everything we did with them.
But we never, we haven't gotten it.
You know what, Bill? I'm going to pull the, um, documents for you, and you can look and see for yourself. I will find all of the sections that refer to a warranty, but we will give you that. But council looked at every single document we did to do this.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm happy to look at them. I think it's more important that council looks at them.
Well, that's
If you looked at them, then I'm
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Yeah, we weren't Yeah. So we did that from the get-go, and they're on the forms that were required by the state as well. Um, so, and in fact, it was our, it was council that caught that they were using a wrong form. So, um, it's just that they're about this, each one's about this thick. Okay. The, uh, all right, so that's where that, that's the solar project. And what I am looking for, and I don't, I don't know if I need it, but I'm supposed to sign the contract with the, uh, subcontractor for MHR. So tonight, if at all possible, I would like to get board of selectmen approval uh, pending the, uh, town council reviewing that contract. So please consider that for another portion of the meeting. Again, it's $4,000 and change. And it's to provide the detailed drawings to be used as part of the, um, information provided to the firms, uh, companies that want to bid on the PPA. Uh, and what we are trying to do is we're trying to get that RFP posted on DAS as soon as we can. It was supposed to go, it's supposed to go up this week. So, um, and that's why town council is, is working so well with us to go through some things that are needed. All right, the update on the Cattle Rock EPA lien status. There are no updates. There's been no activity on that. New business, um, what we have is, we have a couple of people who have requested to be put on the uh, Commission on Aging. We've got two regular full member terms. I believe their letters of interest or emails of interest are in your packet.
Is Christine Ray a resident of that?
I, um, which one's that?
Christine Ray.
Chris, Chris, uh, um, Chris. I forgot what the last name was.
Chris Ray.
Oh, Chris Ray. I don't think she is. She, but she is involved in everything they're doing over there.
I'm familiar with her, and I've had a lot of dealings with Christine.
Do you think that, uh, we were looking at that, and we didn't find anything that precluded her from being on, on there?
Typically, we put residents on that commission that I
That was the first thing that came up as soon as I heard. She lives in Eastford.
Yeah.
The save, the only saving grace is the fact that she's so involved with what's going on there, and they felt that she would be a good member.
I know she's a hard worker, and I know how hard she worked, and I personally witnessed it a couple of times when Kit was out for various illnesses. And how much interest she showed, but I, I think we have a question whether or not perhaps as, as we're concerned.
All right, so we, Chris, we looked at the ordinance, if I recall, we looked
I'm sorry?
We looked at the ordinance. We didn't see anything that precluded it.
Right.
Um, I don't know where to check on that unless we go to town council on that one, too.
I would check with town council.
All right, so how about the other one?
I will move to appoint Teresa Phillips. Is any, uh, relation there, sir?
I'll second.
Uh, Phillips, any, uh, further comments? All in favor?
Aye, right. And I also
Aye, motion passes.
I, I would also entertain making a motion for Christine Ray with the caveat if town council finds it appropriate.
That would be nice. That would, uh, take care of it, and we'll get that right off to town council.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Roger. Uh, if Very good. Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, uh, we didn't have any other appointments, correct, Chris? I didn't see anything. Not, not yet.
Yeah. Transfer Station Committee will reappoint.
Oh, that's right. So we have a list of names from the Transfer Station Committee. Chris, do you have those? If not, I'm late.
Well, you've got Keith.
Trying to keep it
Booker.
Well.
Tom evidently doesn't want to. Um, evidently doesn't want to.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So we came up with, I think, five people keeping it.
Casey, Keith, Chuck. Casey.
Casey, Keith, Chuck.
Casey, Keith, Chuck.
I'm sorry?
Okay, Keith, Keith and Chuck.
Who was the other one? Yeah. Darn it. I have that in my notes. Cause I'd like them to get together real quick. Start working on some things. Let me see if I can find it. Shoot. Who was the other person? Gary.
Gary.
It was Gary.
Again, Gary's not a resident.
Yes, he is. Gary lives in town.
He owns property in town.
He owns property in town. He didn't live in town.
The, the reason we were looking at him is because of his familiarity with the operations.
Oh, I think it's a good choice. And he, I did, he qualifies because he owns property in town. He's a taxpayer, but he's not a resident.
All right. So because he owns property in town, can he even sit on this committee? Or is that something where they can invite him in for his opinion?
As a taxpayer, I think he'd be, you know, if you want to check with town council about that.
No. Um. I.
I think he's good because he's there virtually every day that it's open.
Right.
So he knows what the issues are?
The, the only thing I'm thinking is if we don't appoint him, but that committee brings him in consult, consultatively. Did I, I made a word, I think.
I buy it. I buy it.
Um, then we're not, uh, we're not infringing on anything we shouldn't, doing something we maybe shouldn't be doing. I mean, when we have someone who owns property here but doesn't reside here, we don't typically have them serving on our boards and committees.
No, but they can vote regarding budget issues.
They can vote regarding budget, but we don't have them serving on our committees and boards.
Nobody comes to mind to me.
Okay. It's your pleasure. What would, what would you like to do? Someone's going to need to make a motion.
We could appoint who we're talking about.
Yep.
And get it clarified about Gary and, and then go down on the next meeting.
Actually, I'd like to get them together ASAP. We've already had a couple of conversations.
I know you're not going to like this, but why don't we nominate one to be on there and just clarify it with town council?
You got it.
Since you'll be talking to them anyway.
Second.
Okay. All right. Uh, second, uh, any more, any more discussion about this, guys? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Most, motion passes. Okay. Okay, um. I also want to make sure I print this for you. I don't think you have this in your packet.
Looks like it's tax refund.
Okay, um, tax refunds. What do we have?
Refund to the estate of carbon buyer. Uh, citing Connecticut general statute twelve dash on twenty-nine and the amount of six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And if, uh, let's see, what's our next thing? Um, if you, uh, give me just a second. You have something in your packet about, um, renaming of Poole Pond?
Yes.
Would you please take a moment and look at it? I just need to get something off.
I've read it already. This is the hole in the wall thing, uh. Now, it said he found the hole in the wall camp.
No, the next thing on the agenda is the building official, the whole contrast.
She stepped out, but the hole in the wall camp.
That was the scout camp piece.
No, hole in wall. They want to rename the pond.
Yeah, I, I read all this stuff, but I, I wasn't familiar with him being the founder of the hole in the wall camp.
He was one of the original, um, one of the things I gave you was about the totem poles and a little story. So.
Um, with this one. You know, that is on, uh, Full Pond Road.
Oh, pond?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I get the wrong name of the pond?
No, it's not, it's not on Cold Pond.
Well, aye.
I don't. It's, it's, it's the lake there
Yeah.
in front of the hole in the wall camp, right off of forty-four.
Yeah.
Full Pond, E-O-O-L-E.
Right. Full Pond. And what is the name of, is that, does that road have a name there that goes into it?
No.
No.
Okay.
So I'd just like to get your opinions and then I'd like to give mine.
Okay, my, my misunderstood was that this was about Colts Pond.
No.
Ah.
And they have like Colts Pond Road and that.
I could, that probably is me, but I probably was saying Poole Pond because I was looking at it, but thinking that the road was saying that, too.
Okay.
From the Eastford line to North Road and then the lot that which is back stores on. And back. Eventually it went, all went to her, or most of it went to Eric Haley's.
Yeah, that was my recollection. That property was all owned by the Eric Haley family originally.
Right. In the February of the state.
What you do with that thing you're going to show me? It's just the first time I remember hearing his name and I'm I'm surprised. I was around then. I, I have no problem with the proposal. Does the hole in the wall camp, they're supporting this and asking for it?
They've already put a sign up saying that it's Pearson Pond.
Okay.
They did. I didn't know that because they haven't had it approved by us.
That's for Sherri said.
So, um.
I mean, is, is Noah's going to get bent out of shape?
Well, that's just it. You know, the, this was named by what? The family that had it?
I never, the name Poole, I never even remember hearing about that name. Or even the name of that, that lake or pond. I always call it the hole in the wall camp pond slash lake. It's what? Forty-three acres? And the interior game was very good, Chris. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Eric Haley was building down across the creek to flood the area, making the pond originally called Poole's Pond. Originally called Poole's Pond. And then Eric Haley created a better pond.
So Roger, what's your thinking?
Um, I'm looking back. Stubs pulled out of the pond by, on a crane on a boat in June nineteen eighty-eight before the camp opened. It's for a session. Paul renamed the pond, Pearson Pond in honor of the ceremony in the gymnasium. So this has been Pearson Pond since nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay.
Just not, hasn't been officially Pearson Pond because it's still labeled.
Right, because the original request to rename the pond, they made a request to US geographical survey to change the name on the map.
So these things kind of are.
Can I try a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen supports the recommendation of the hole in the wall camp to rename.
Hold on.
To.
Uh, uh, they're, they've already renamed it. So to know, to.
Confirm?
To officially.
Who do you know? Who said they renamed it?
US tree walking.
You're saying nineteen eighty-eight?
I just, yeah, and said, uh, George Eric Haley had the stubs pulled out of the pond by a crane on a boat in June nineteen eighty-eight before the camp opened for its first session. Paul renamed the pond Pearson Pond in my honor at a ceremony in the gymnasium.
The original request from.
In my honor. I forgot. This is a guy asking.
Yep.
For himself. I guess it was what, what was off, off putting to me.
Well.
There's a three names.
Yeah, all of this went back in nineteen eighty-eight. I mean, you're saying, you're saying it's already been black carded, so that's.
Well, I don't care about whether they've already put a placard up. I only care about whether or not we are approving it.
This request was for the board of selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
So this isn't coming.
For a proposal regarding proposal that's already been submitted to the US board on geographical names.
As a proposal, but they need our approval.
So I don't have any problem supporting their proposal.
So it was already renamed?
Yeah.
But not, not technically, not geographic.
I mean, my recollection way back then, and I was sitting in Chris's seat at the time was they were expanding that pond at the request of the hole in the wall camp in anticipation of more functions.
That makes sense.
I, I never heard of any change in names or anything.
Or even heard it referred to as.
Never, I.
Yeah.
So, so Chris is looking for something. Let's make sure we got what she's looking for.
Sherri has, part of her.
Is that Sherri much?
Yeah.
This is from her oral history interview with Butch Simpson. Who lived across the street.
I want to make sure we're not going to tweak anybody's notes on this.
Yes. We checked.
Okay.
Interestingly.
They bought a bulldozer and widened the pond out.
Hey.
Do I get the impression that our town clerk is not exactly comfortable with this or is she all of?
She's uncomfortable with renaming things for families. You know, the, the things that have been named for families, like names of roads and stuff like that.
And refresh my memory. This is Pearson asking it to be renamed and that went to the geological group. Having it renamed in his honor. Is that correct?
The hole in the wall petition.
Yes.
To rename it technically formally, so it appears on the map as Pearson Bond.
That I understand, but you were just reading something about in his honor, in my honor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Blurb on that last sheet. That was on the flip side of that one.
Yeah.
That was. Paul renamed the pond Pearson Pond in my honor at a ceremony in the gymnasium. Um, if, if the hole in the wall is referring it to Pearson Pond, I guess it's Pearson Pond. Let's make it official.
Okay. Um, again, make your motion.
Um, I make a motion that in, uh, in keeping with the accuracy of, of the bond's name, I the hole in the wall is Pearson Pond that we make it official, that we confirm, confirm, uh, it's officially, make it official that uh, if we will refer to it as Pearson Pond.
Uh, that we support the recommendation. Chris, are you catching that, I hope? Oh, and basically a formally naming it Pearson Pond. Okay. If you've captured that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um. Very good. Thank you.
All right, you skipped building official.
Okay, so building official. Uh, thank you. We have a lot on here. The, um, building official, we have a contract that's been, was sent over by Bolton to, uh, you know, for a two or three year contract for regional services, which we are already receiving from their people. And, uh, you have the document there. Bill, you may have had a chance to look at it. I think you had it in your packet before.
Yep.
But I just want to pull something up to share with you about the money. So. So. Did some math on it. Just so you would understand what this involves. Uh, and also they have a few typos in the thing that I picked up on that I've already told Jim about. And that, uh, we would be, you know, we as a ward would be talking about it. Uh, let me take a second. So. This. There it is. So let me do this for you. I, uh, printed out what the cost would be each year and what the difference would be each year. Uh, percentages of increase so that you'd understand what's being offered. We don't list the details quite the same.
What they have been doing is they've changed it so that the building official, uh, Rich McKinnon is supposed to be here in the office on Fridays and give me an update. Unfortunately, our schedules haven't worked quite right. But in looking at this contract, I just wanted to share with you. This is what they're offering. This is what it was for this past, this fiscal year.
So for this fiscal year, uh, it, it was forty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-six cents. For, I'm sorry, for twenty-three, twenty-four. And then for this fiscal year is forty-four thousand one hundred forty-three and eight, I'm sorry, uh, and eighty cents, which is two point seven percent increase that we have this year. And then what they're asking for, uh, for the next fiscal year, year end twenty-six is a three point six percent increase, which totals to forty-five thousand seven hundred thirty-two. And for fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven, forty-seven thousand fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, which is another two point nine percent increase. So that's for, it basically is showing the two-year offering that they have. They also had another offering that was if we wanted to do a three-year contract. And I can't remember what it says, but I'll take another look at it. About that. What I do see is that, you know, thank you, Bill, for telling me about the problem we had where the building official made an appointment and didn't honor it. Uh, and also uh, I had Eastern Highlands has something where they were looking at some, uh, well, that was looking at something and realized that the building official never checked and should have known to, uh, uh, have the. uh, have the owner, uh, do something through Eastern Highlands. He never told her. She happened to be looking at the property for some reason and discovered this. So the conversation I would want to have with Jim, yeah?
Could I, since we're talking about negotiations and.
An executive session?
Could I suggest that we move this to the end of the meeting and?
That sounds, that is fine with me. Thank you. Okay, uh, will someone make a motion to move that, uh, add that to our executive session?
So.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye, approved.
I mean, my, my understanding is executive session has the regarding potential legal.
You are so right.
Or personnel, and this obviously is potential legal matter.
Okay, you are absolutely correct, Bill. Okay. Uh, now review town Zoom accounts.
No, no, parking lot lights.
Oh, parking lot lights, so. This has been fun to follow through on. We, uh, cannot get the original lights. But there's been, uh, quite a bit of research done. And what you have in front of you, I don't know that I have that whole packet in front of me, is what has been suggested for, uh, potential lights for back there. And let me just do a summary. So we, we have three lights in the back and one pole is down. And the suggestion, the real suggestion that was made by our electrical person was to fix those lights, you know, put new poles up for those lights, fix the lights. And.
By Alex.
Yeah. And, um, those are going to fix quite a bit of the lighting problem. And then for the other, and they could be more modernized lights, if you like. And if you don't mind, and I'll speak clearly to people here that are on the, they're looking at the recording. Can you, can someone pull up the packet? In here.
Is this it?
No. Do you have it in? No, it's not that. Have you gone through this? Chris, I think you gave.
This is why I can't find them, because they were in your box. Oh, they're in your box.
Oh, I, yeah, my, my bad. Ah, there we go.
Let me look on this with you. Okay, I hope everybody can hear. Turn this chair around.
Sorry, Christine.
Wrong down.
Right, so with this, when you look at this, uh, here's a decorative pole light, this is like what we have, much like it. So it's in character, uh, and his recommendation would be over time is to replace the lights in the front. Okay, and we can have that look, which goes with the building. It goes with the lights that are over in, uh, in front of the library as well. Okay, and then uh, you have this for the, uh, poles, and that's for one pole. Everybody, what you're looking at is for one pole.
Sixteen dollar triple.
Yep. And then you have, although he could cut us a deal for small pole, whatever, uh, in terms of his installation. So the, uh, and here's, you know, what they look like. And then this is actually. Yeah, details, you know. We could have this kind of a light in the back. The bottom line is we need LED lights and these things so that they can be easily maintained.
Have we done a light?
This, this is the light that we have across the street?
Something like that.
Over Trunko Lane?
Something like that.
And these are LED?
Yes, and so are the other ones, the other ones that are shown here. So, uh, and. So decorative pool light head, old light heads are the six hundred and ten, six hundred and eleven bucks plus the LED, so they're really, so seven hundred bucks.
The light.
The light. And then, was it thirteen? I, I just need to check some notes.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. So, um. Here. I had, no, I had some notes from when I talked with Alex, because he also had, you know, his installation charges. And.
I'll make you a copy of the imperial contract. And the index in the front of the contract, so it's sections that you were.
So I am sorry, I don't have all my notes in front of me. Um, what I'd like you to do is just look at this and get a, an idea of, you know, this is an idea of what the costs are plus his installation costs. And, um, uh, you know, my recommendation at this point in time is replace the three in the back, see how they work out. And.
Missing pole though.
Yep, there's no reason. I think that, that, that might be adequate. But what I'd like to do is in our next meeting or in a special meeting, I will give you some more details on his estimate. I scratched that out on something and I just don't have it in front of me. Um, but this is the official stuff that is. And for us to look at it and go, you know, what do we want to do? Uh, do we just want to start with the three?
Yeah, let's get, we got to get some light back there.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get the light back there. Let's get the light back, two, three, get the light back there and then we'll look at the pole.
Can we reuse the ones that he would take out? The ones he would put.
He didn't say, he didn't say we could reuse them. Um.
If they're bolted in, they could be at least stored if we had some others that we had to replace sometime, imagine. I, I agree with Roger.
Yeah.
I mean, these are the low yield. I forget the technical term they use it.
Uh, low impact.
I know they're more expensive on what they're showing us here, but I agree, let's get three in, see how it looks.
I don't, were they more expensive?
If I read this right, the fancy one was six eighty-two, six ninety-three. And these are.
Sixteen fifty-one each.
They're considerably more expensive.
So what I, again, what I'd like you to do is think about what this, what we want to do back there. And if we do, if we put, let's just say we put the other ones up. The other ones that are offered there, they're less. They're LED lights as well. And they could be low, medium, and bright. And I was telling him, whatever it is, it has to be somewhat medium because we have to worry about the light affecting the people who live behind.
Do they, do those units meet the existing P and Z requirements for new light? That we request.
I didn't check that, but I'd be surprised that he wouldn't know that because he's on P and Z. And he's been on it, he's the longest serving member of P and Z.
Like the first time we insisted was when they did the revamp up at Extramart there. Those were those low yield.
Okay.
Well, and there's a more technical name that I can't think of, but.
Yeah.
And I know we insist on any new businesses putting that, those in right now.
Right, but this is, again, this is Alex who's been on P and Z the longest, any other.
Does it, do these meet the same?
I'll ask him the question.
The same requirement?
Oh, I'll ask him this question.
Other people to do. I mean, other than that, uh, you asked me one time what, what I want you to do. If we can't do anything else, a couple of, of temporary low spots off of the building here shooting up. I mean, I've been at meetings where I've put my car at one.
I did, I did too. Okay, I've done the same thing.
You know.
It took forever to get an answer back.
I understand. And we've all heard about it more times probably than we like.
Right.
And they're right, it is a safety. It's a little better now, we, we're not tripping over ice and, and sloshing around in snow out there.
Exactly.
Um. So you don't want an answer on this now?
No, I, I, what I'd like to do is make sure when we go to make our decision that you have all the information in front of you, and I, I have some more information, I think that needs to be there.
Okay.
So Alan, uh, I'm sorry, that Alex had taken me through. He talked about a discount based upon the number of lights and that kind of thing. So, uh, that's why I scratched out, for whatever reason, I don't have it in that folder.
I mean, there's a considerable difference in cost.
Yes. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to confirm with him that both kinds of lights meet the requirements that we know.
Well, the standard that we've set for everybody else.
Right, but his, his big thing was it has to be LED. This is crazy, trying to do it the other way. Also, there were no, uh, two, what I, uh, was able to find is there are no uh, discounts anywhere else, you know, like with, uh, power company.
I, I look at it more right now as a safety issue.
Yeah. Okay, so you have that information to hold.
And if it's easier one day for us to come in here and sit down with Alex.
That's a really. Okay, I'll see if I can arrange that. Uh, because I would really like him to speak to you directly. The, okay. So this next one is, uh, review, I'm sorry, review town Zoom accounts. What I did was I gave you a letter from town council. Let me know if you want this to go into executive session. Uh, I don't think it needs it. And I, I just like to point out before you read this that the Board of Finance's take on this was that they can use their money however they want to. This was never a question about them using the available funds they have for their department. This was a question about security in our system. Which I tried to let them know, and they weren't, she wasn't hearing that at the time. She kept referring to, uh, uh, legislation that said that they could use their monies however they want.
Christina.
Yeah, and it wasn't about that at all. And I, uh, I'll give you a, a way that it was described by town council. He said it wasn't a great discop, this description, but it's kind of like the town owns the car, okay? And the Board of Finance wants to put a sign on it and a megaphone saying, hey, we got a meeting. Kind of thing. And they don't own the car. We own the car, which is what would, um, support, has to, you know, we have a support system.
The website.
Yeah, and for us, what happens is meeting minutes are, are, for example, Zoom meetings are, you know, they're set up by working with Tykey. And I'm going to use a hand, some hand gestures. Tykey's over here. The, uh, where the, uh, the, the account is that uh, the Board of Finance set up is over here. And we have Savage over here. Savage manages our infrastructure, a lot of it. And Tykey has multiple accounts that they manage for us. They have three, but they're only using two in case they have meetings where one board has a meeting and another board has a meeting at the same time. You can't have a, two meeting notices, two Zoom meetings at the same time on the same account. So they've got multiple accounts. And what we do is we put together an agenda. We send it to, um, uh, I believe we send it to Karen, our, uh, our, uh, there with me?
Webmaster.
Webmaster, thank you. And it also goes to Sherry. Uh, but goes to, uh, it goes to Karen. Karen then requests a Zoom meeting. Tykey creates the Zoom meeting in their environment. And they send the link to the Zoom meeting. In their environment, they have it set up for the Zoom meeting to automatically record that kind of thing. If we need their help during a meeting, assistance for a particular kind of meeting, for example, um, planning a zoning. Uh, they, you know, that's one where we actually have the person from Tykey is in those meetings. He happens to be the EMD. Not EMD, the, uh, CEO, zoning enforcement officer. And, uh, so if we have any issues with meetings, we're to contact them, and I've never had them not be responsive. You know, where, hey, I'm having a problem with this, or even before meeting, hey, I want to make sure this is going to work. We can actually have them change the settings. Uh, but they own the accounts and we contract with them to provide the service. They also, when, um, the Zoom recording is done, that goes to Karen. No, it goes to Tykey and Tykey puts it out in the town's, uh, Yahoo. Yahoo, what's it called?
YouTube.
YouTube. God, I've gotten old. God.
Yahoo sounds good to me.
Yeah. They put it out there. Uh, Karen has the ability, I believe, to do that. However, you know, Tykey takes care of that as part of what they're handling. So I had a conversation with both Tykey and Savage about, uh, our Zoom setup downstairs and talked to them about the town starting to have our own account or, or a couple of accounts that we can manage ourselves over time. And, um, that was not, uh, poo-pooed or whatever, you know, that was something they figured over time we would do that. But it would not be done the way the Board of Finance is doing it right now. The Board of Finance right now, it's kind of like a rogue account. And that rogue account is being, you know, is being used for town meetings. And the information from it, the only reason I have approved letting the, the videos go out to our town, uh, YouTube and, uh, and to, for them to continue using Christina's, I'm going to call it Christina's account because she's the one that has access to it. Is, um, because this happened at a point in time, I held, I, I delayed things for one or two meetings, but because the Board of, so a Board of Ed was going to present their budget, I wanted that to be able to be seen by our public. And the same thing went for all of the meetings that have occurred since related to the budget. So that it didn't make it so that the public wouldn't be able to see what's going on. But this is not something I would want to continue. We have to have something that works better. And, and the reason, uh, at one of the meetings, it just so happened, the meeting had already started, was going along, and one of their own board members was in the waiting room because she set up a waiting room. So that person couldn't automatically come in. I have a hard time with people not being able to automatically come in. But I also, when I was talking with Tykey and Savage, is we need to make sure that we have, if we set up our own town accounts, um, that we have something that is set up, or even they set it up for us, where we can, uh, have something turned on where we can kick somebody out of the meeting. And if you kick them out of the meeting, they're automatically out of the meeting for the rest of the meeting. Now, I don't want to be a Pollyanna about this. If someone wants to Zoom bomb our meetings, they've got multiple IDs to use to come in. They can keep coming in, we can keep kicking them out. We kick them out once, according to what the capabilities are now with Zoom, they stay out. So I wanted to bring this in front of you so that you would see that the, the issue is not about the money that the Board of Finance wants to, has used. Uh, or even, I don't think Christina has actually put money, uh, put that requisition, uh, BL in.
She hasn't?
No, and I don't know that I would approve it because they didn't go through us to do this. So they can say they can use the money for whatever they want, I kind of don't care. Uh, that was never the point. The point was about the security of what we're putting out there, and we would not, you know, there's a process that people follow that we set up specifically for this. And it's okay for us to improve our process, it's okay for us to change it, but it needs to be consistent. So those are my feelings about it. You guys can whatever, but right now I don't think a decision needs to be made yet. Let's get through the budget. Make sure people are getting the information that they need. Um, because we're not seeing a lot of people in our meetings.
No. Everything you just. Everything you just said. Rational why you were opposed to that. Where does the board of Ed and the way they handle their Zoom meetings fit in with that scenario?
They're their own entity. They are set up, they have their own thing and they have a person there who is not the chair. Who is managing the meeting for them, it's like having Tykey there. Okay, that person, there is a, a meeting room or whatever, but they get in right away. Um. So, but they're their own entity, we are different one. And we are, you know, we're.
Do they handle their own meetings or does, does that come into our system? Where?
No, they handle their, they handle their own.
Okay, I mean.
They set themselves up that way.
This stuff does appear those, correct me if I'm wrong, on our YouTube link.
That was my question, is the.
I don't know if there are things go out to our YouTube.
I thought it did.
I'll double check that, I didn't know that they did, I know that they put them out on their website. And I don't think we have them on our website.
I mean, because as I recall.
Yeah.
Both of these instances that resulted in them sort of going independent were a result of being Zoom bombed.
Once.
But I didn't see the.
Everybody's been Zoom bombed, we've had, um, three Zoom bombings in four plus going on five years. Which is why FOI said. You having a meeting room and having, um, you know, this kind of thing, they said it doesn't, uh, uh. The original one was you had to, you had to contact them to get the link to the meeting. And they said that that was absolutely inappropriate. And, and they said based upon the frequency of getting Zoom bombed. What I believe, what I honestly feel that people want is if you were Zoom bombed, to kick that person out of the meeting. That capability, and right now, we don't have that capability set up in the meetings that. Uh, set, uh, Tykey has set up for us. And to have that, you have to have an ownership.
The P and Z would be the exception because.
You can do it right there, yeah.
I hear you.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand, I mean, we don't have, I don't have 17 different departments with 17 different.
So as part of the looking at how we're going to, um, upgrade our meeting room downstairs, this was part of that conversation. It was kind of an extension of it, is okay, if the town, you know, if we want to have our own Zoom accounts. And manage them, talk to me, you know, tell me about how you're doing it today and what we would have to do. Uh, and so I have a follow-up that I'm doing with both Savage and Tykey in the room. And I wanted the full estimate, we had estimated for the room and, and all of this about fifteen thousand dollars. And that's on the capital improvement plan. So I want to follow up with all the details from them. All right, so that's what's going on with that. We'll be merrily along, uh, if it's okay, we'll just leave it status quo for now, let them get through the budget process, I don't want to hamper that in any way. All right, uh. Yukon, okay, the Yukon American Institute of Aeronautics and As- Astronautics requests for rocket testing. All right, this one, I have talked with, uh, the fire chief. I've talked with the, uh. Fire marshal. Uh. From, from my, I'll just say from my perspective, no, I would not want them testing rockets in Ashford Memorial Park. And to kind of reiterate. I asked, uh, I originally asked for their professor or whatever, whoever was in charge of it to write something about it. I never got that, I got this, uh, student who's been pursuing it, rightly so. Uh, getting the information and feeding it to me. So, and it wasn't a rush to get into it, at one point is when we had a fire danger going on, so.
Well, I read, I read through the stuff that you guys gave me.
Yeah.
And. One thing that seemed to. Was clarified that I misunderstood apparently. These aren't firing rockets up. But it's testing of the platforms. That these rockets actually don't take off, or it's not designed where they would take off.
Or screwed into a test stand, doesn't take off.
Now, having said that, I mean, it's a different animal than I was envisioning, because I was.
Thinking of a rocket going sometimes.
Uh, going off into the woods or towards the houses or who knows, so it's a little different than that, however. I still think that there's a liability risk there for the town.
Well.
We're talking about non-residents from the town.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't want to set a precedent. Where we've allowed something like this, God forbid anybody got hurt or.
Or a dog got scared that.
Whatever.
Dragged a person or whatever.
I don't see any positive aspects to this.
Well.
In our recreation park.
Let me add, let me add to that. Uh, if, if I didn't already tell you, um. I asked if they, uh, had pursued it with Mansfield and Wyndham.
Told me, and they both denied.
And they said, that both of them were, you know, they were pushed back. Then I asked if they had approached another town and they said no.
I just don't know with all the land that Yukon possesses.
Right.
Why Yukon isn't taking care of it.
And open park, parking lots that aren't necessarily used seven days a week either, that are amnesty.
Yeah.
So I, I also don't feel the town should take on the liability and I also, I wouldn't want someone to go down and shoot off firecrackers down there. Which don't go, you know, the small, even small ones.
I just think from a safety perspective, from a liability perspective, and from setting a bad precedent. That. Regrettably, we have to deny it.
So shall we have a motion, an official motion for that?
Motion to.
Okay, and the motion is to, uh, not approve the request. And do we want to say due to, uh, safety and liability concerns?
Safety, liability, public inconvenience.
And we had, that was Bill made the motion. Roger seconded, any more discussion?
Hi.
Motion, uh, yeah, all in favor, motion for, to approve the motion? Roger?
Uh.
Still thinking?
But.
Uh, do you approve the motion?
Yes, I say.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Um, yeah, I love this, I know the club has spoken, the safety officials will want to do tests at depot campus, but they were not okay.
What was that, they were not okay, what was that?
I know the club has spoken on safety officials when we wanted to do tests at depot campus, but they were not okay with that, which is why we do it off campus now.
But depot campus is like.
Well, I don't know.
Still Royal School.
The problem, the problem is, is that they did this here before.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I think the motion is correct.
Clear.
That we've said why not.
Yep.
Okay, uh, what else do we have, we have, uh.
Just the, the notice, the thing from Josie Lamar about commencement.
Oh, I gave you a copy of the commencement, uh, Ashford School commencement ceremonies in June.
Linda and I are going to go.
Yeah, uh, what, what I want to do is I'm going to answer for all of this if I can.
Okay.
So I know Jeff and I already know, how about you? Okay, because they wanted to make sure we had CD.
Yes.
Well, we skipped over the planning and zoning recommendation regarding wood line.
No, um.
We didn't.
It's not ready yet.
Okay.
In returning, has never done this before.
Okay.
So.
No action on that.
Right.
All right.
Do you want to go into executive session?
Yes, executive session, so we can, uh, so, uh, would someone, uh, make a motion to go in, uh. Get motion to go into executive session and somebody seconded, and it is for the purpose of.
Uh, negotiations.
Yeah.
Lead slash legal matter. And you said personal, personnel related matter?
Yeah.
I assume it's not specific to any one person.
No, we actually have, no, it's not. And personal matters, and we have a second, and we're going into executive session at eight.
Twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five, and at that point, um, we are going to close this portion, the online portion of the meeting. And, uh, our minutes will reflect any action taken afterwards. So let me bring the meeting down.